Welcome to the Vermillion Public School District Board of Education meeting, Monday, March 11th, 2019. Colin Gold.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Higginville.
Here.
Ms. Stedman.
Here.
Four members present.
Can I have all the citizens of the month come up? We're gonna talk to them and then we're gonna have them give a pledge and then we'll have a one moment assignment. All right, all girls. We're presenting tonight. Hi, Emma. What's your name?
Ella.
What grade are you in?
First.
Who do you teach?
Miss Books.
What do you want to do in your job?
Learn to be an alien.
Learn to be an alien, okay. You wanna go back to the end of the line or is... Hey, what's your name?
Ava.
What grade are you in?
Third.
And my name, who do you teach?
Stuntman.
And what do you want to do in your job?
Be a teacher.
All right. Hi, what's your name?
Sabrina.
What grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
And who's your teacher?
Mrs. Faulkner.
What do you want to do?
A doctor.
All right. Hi, what's your name?
Mike See.
And what grade are you in?
Third.
Your teacher's name?
Mrs. Parker.
And what do you want to do in your job?
Be a YouTuber.
Be a YouTuber. That's you.
Yeah.
Hi, what's your name?
Ellie.
What grade are you in?
First.
Who do you teach?
Miss Frank.
And what do you want to do in your job?
Be a doctor.
All right. Everybody on the court, can we all rise to say the pledge? Are you guys gonna help us with the pledge? Big three, are you gonna pledge and make a difference?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item five, Sarah Stepp, student liaison report.
Yep, today we have Melissa Wagner with us. She is the executive functioning coach of our A312. She's gonna talk to you about a program called ZOR and it deals with social emotional learning. Students, that's pretty cool. I'm Melissa Wagner and I'm executive functioning coach. So what I do all day long is I talk about organization, time management, starting a task, staying on task, completing the task, working memory, emotional regulation. And then in elementary school, we have a special program that we do. It's called Zones of Regulation. We made it ZOR because ZOR sounds really cool when you tell your friends, and we want this Wagner to do ZOR. We also have, Mrs. Green, she does ZOR for first and second grade and I do second and third grade. So actually, Mrs. Green put this together so you can see some of the actual things that we do with the kids. Okay, so here's some of the projects that we do. The first one, we talk about who's the boss of you. Are your emotions the boss of you or are you the boss of you? You have to be in control of your emotions. And we give each of the emotions a color. And they do this through the book, the zones. And it's easy for the kids to connect the color to the emotion. So we can ask them, "How are you feeling today?" They say, "I feel green," and green is ready to learn. And if they're in the red zone, and you can, I don't know if you can see it very well, but we kind of matched it up to the movie where they have the emotion movie. I don't know if probably most of you watched it here. So it's really easy for the kids to match it up to a color. So when they're feeling a certain way, they're in a certain color. If they're feeling yellow and they're frustrated, how can you get back to green? How can you get back to learning? And we teach them these things. We also talk about what's expected at school, what behaviors are expected, what behaviors are unexpected. After they know their zones and the colors, we can go through and they can map out their day. Now, that day that's been mapped out, where you see going up and down, up and down, that's not really a student's day, that's Snoopy's day, because first we map Snoopy's day out. If you've ever watched Charlie Brown, you know Snoopy is like this through his day. So that's why it looks that way. But then they can apply that to their own day and they map out their own day so they can see what parts of the day are they feeling angry, what parts of the day are they feeling ready to learn, what parts of the day they might be really frustrated. And it may come up every day during math, they're frustrated, frustrates them, what are we gonna do about it? How are we gonna handle that? We talk about problems, big problems, little problems, because a lot of times in elementary school, everything to them is a big problem. I don't have a pencil and they melt down. Well, then we talk about, well, what really is a big problem? A number five problem would be a tornado that comes through your school and, you know, destroys things. Is that losing a pencil? No. So how would you act for losing a pencil? How would you act if a tornado came through? So that's, and they get to see, oh, I guess my problem really is little. And after we do this, you really have to talk to them for a little bit, like, okay, so you missed your homework, is that a big deal? At first it is, then they realize it's not, and it really helps out. The triggers, knowing my triggers, that's a big thing. We talk about what is making you angry, what's getting you out of the green zone, what's causing you to be frustrated. Sometimes it can be, like I said, a subject area, if they have struggle with reading or math, that might be frustrating to them. But it could also just be loud noises or things like that. So when we talk about it, they realize what their triggers are. And after they know their triggers, we teach them how to deal with that. Okay, you're angry, you're frustrated, what can you do about it? And one of the most, the biggest power tool that everybody has, and we tell them, everywhere we go, is your deep breathing. So even if it's your grocery store and you want Fruity Pebbles or your mother tells you no, you know, it's not a big problem, but you're getting frustrated, start deep breathing. You always have your breath with you, nobody can take that away from you. There's also other things, so since we have mostly students here, put your hands together like this. Come on, do it. All right, now move one finger at a time. So if you're concentrating on moving one finger at a time, it's actually calming you down. It's a calm down technique, because you're focusing on your fingers, you're not focusing on the fact that you're bound to buy you Fruity Pebbles if you wanted, and it helps. So we teach them things like that. So even a kid who might walk down the hallway and get extra excited just walking down the hallway, you can walk down the hallway like this, nobody really knows what you're doing. You know, think elementary, you know, you guys aren't gonna walk through the hall like this. In elementary, it could happen. And then they're focusing on their fingers, they're not focusing on running and touching the things on the wall. So it helps. And then we do have tools you can do on your own with the breathing, your fingers, your tent pants. We have things that you can do with a teacher. Sometimes they have too much energy, they need to jump on a trampoline, they need to go outside, they need to, you know, get that extra energy out. So we teach them that those are appropriate tools with a teacher. The last thing we have on here is Rock Brain and Superflex. It's just a, being a flexible thinker. It's just a visual for that. So you've been thinking about pizza all day, you know they're selling pizza at lunch, you can't wait, love pepperoni, you get up there with your lunch tray and they say, "I'm sorry, you only have cheese." Some kids will melt down, but you wanna be a flexible thinker. A flexible thinker would say, "Okay, I still get pizza even though it's cheese, take the cheese pizza, move on your way." Seems simple, but a lot of times we really need to discuss this, we need to talk to the kids about it, we need to make sure that they understand how to see their emotions and deal with their emotions effectively. So then, I'm Melissa Wagner, and if anybody has questions, they're welcome to email me. And then my favorite parent resource is understood.com or dot org. That is amazing for anything with executive functioning. Even if you're gonna have a parent conference, it'll give you questions that you can ask the teacher or talk to the teacher about. Just an excellent, excellent resource. Lots of things on that, understood.org that you can use. And that's it. You said not a lot of schools and not many schools have this program. You said you were talking to people and like, "Oh, you guys have that at your school, that's amazing." Having executive functioning coach is a big deal. And not a big deal, but having an executive functioning coach in your school is a big deal in the fact that it's like a K-12 position. It's part of my position, part of my job as an adventure specialist, I get to do this, I get to go into all the grades. I go into middle school and I talk about, a little bit about zones, a little bit more about organization at that point. But whenever I talk to my friends in the educational community outside of Vermillion, they're like, "You do what? Your school has that? That's amazing." Like, it's a big, it's really a big deal to have somebody focusing on executive functioning, because there are so many, you know, deficits in that. Thank you very much.
Okay, item number six, legislative report with Krista Russell.
All right, so still not a whole lot of things being passed is what I'm seeing. It seems like the beginning of the year, most of the stuff, people are getting to their role in that sort of thing. So I did find just a couple of bills I think they just kind of mentioned that are just kind of like in the, coming to the committees or doing like a sponsor hearing, sponsor testimonies, that sort of thing on them. One of them is House Bill 22. I'm not really sure if this one pertains to us, but I just thought it was interesting. Requires a study of the status of all school buildings eligible for school facilities funding regarding their air conditioning accessibility, school safety and other amenities. It seems like over a six-month period of this past, that was gonna be something that at the end of six months, they would have to report back on just kind of the status of these schools and where they are in regards to those days. So that's, that's one. And then there was another one, Senate Bill 26. That one would permit teachers to deduct up to $250 from their state income taxes for out-of-pocket expenses for classroom supplies and professional development. So that one was at the sponsor testimony area right now and supposing that, see where that one goes.
Okay, number seven, public participation. Is there anybody you would like to see on the court?
From my high school swim team. As you know, this adventure started three years ago with you giving permission for Jack Reedy to represent VHS in 2017 sectional districts and district swim meets. The following year, turned to Paton, joined Jack in the 2017-2018 season. They competed in a try meet, two invitationals, SBC conference meet and sectionals and districts again, which now brings us to our current season recap of the 2018-19 season. We had nine swimmers join us this year on the team. We see many of them are here. Unfortunately, due to our club status, our athletes were not able to train and compete as much as other SBC teams. Our sailors trained at Mercy and Splash Zone and competed in a few meets this season. First was the Shelby Invitational, with our boys taking second place overall. The team then traveled to Portland High School to compete in a try meet against Portland and Huron. Our second try meet was a Valley Forge against Padawan Crestview, with our sailors only two points shy of winning the entire meet. Next was the 2019 SBC Conference Meet, where the sailor boys finished fifth overall and came home with a few conference titles. Next, we had five swimmers advance out of sectionals on two districts and won then on to our state tournament. Our season was long, it was fun, and we have a few minutes for you to take you through a brief, little recap of what we did and a glimpse into what the future will be. There were a lot of people that took to make that happen, community supporters, volunteers, Brett and Melissa, amazing job volunteering their time and their hours, we have done a lot of all of that. There are some athletes here that may want to share some of their stories. I can tell you as a parent, I witnessed many of them venture out, first time ever, brand new sport. Being older, established athletes and trying something for the first time was amazing. One athlete who's not here, he realized his one point was crucial in almost winning a meet. Another person a little nervous, never, ever involved in a competitive sport, nervous to even get in the pool, stood on the pool deck for the first time, she never missed a practice after that. So hopefully that's opened the door for her, for new things. Any swimmers here want to share?
I'm Caleb Love, I'm juniors here and this is my first year swimming. Vermillion swim team should be considered a varsity sport. The members who stayed on the team throughout the entire season were fully committed and intend to come back. The program is quickly growing with verbal commitments for next season from over five individuals and we have even more. So it is encouraging to everyone and does not exclude or turn anyone away. The accepting atmosphere mainly coming from our coaches Brett Dawson and Melissa Roberts, but also help from Colleen Rainey, who has really been pushing for the recognition of swimming. Personally, this season was the most rewarding bowling sports. Swimming is single-handedly the toughest sport I've ever participated in. It increases endurance and speed, but at the same time building strength and muscle flexibility. The team isn't just rewarding because of the physical benefits, but also from the dedication of the coaches and players. The coaches were not just going through the motions of practice and they weren't just naturally showing up. Everyone who was present, whether it was the athletes' parents and even the coaches, they were all there because they truly wanted to be. At every meet, there would never be a time where every single one of us wasn't cheering on the other. Finding the perfect balance of flexibility and seriousness within schedules is exactly what our coaches are able to do for us. On our team, there were a few who were involved in other activities and sports. Our coaches recognized it and instead of them missing practice, those who played basketball or were in winter guard got their workouts in and went to the pool earlier to get a practice in. That isn't just dedication from the coaches, but it also shows how the athletes actually cared about the season. Everyone on their team had individual successes, like Mrs. Rainey said, the boys as a whole team did really well and got second or third and even almost first, and all of our meets took only five boys. But the individual successes, like I know Savannah and I broke our personal records at each meet and Jesse joined for the last two meets, two or three meets, and she broke her record each meet as well. Sam has never swam before and he was part of the relay that made it to districts and Jack made it safe. This kind of results to us how everyone evolved, coaches themselves, to get everything they can get out of the season. The hard work and effort from everyone, that everyone has scored this sport, shows the great potential it has to grow.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other swimmers? I'm gonna take a photo of Jack. Jack us.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, this is the first time that I, when I was supposed to say something. When I see, I look back there, I see my younger brother and my younger brothers up here and the future generation. And I know that everyone here who swam put in hard work. And it's not easy. It's really not. I mean, when you think about swimming, maybe you think about being on a beach on a relaxing day. But no, I put in 4,000 yards of practice every day, five days a week. And you try hard enough to get you to great places. And everyone here at every meet broke their personal best. I can, that's when, I can guarantee you that. And that's all. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brittany Dross. I just wanted to get up here and first of all, commend all of you guys who are on the team. My two right there, Caleb and Eli, they both swim for the Vermillion Torpedoes, which is a club team through the Vermillion YMCA, they practice at Splash Zone. And they've been swimming with the Rainys, actually, since they were both four years old. So competing on a huge level since they were four. And I think for, like they said, some of these kids start when they're in high school, they just started this year, but some of these kids start competing. Megan started when she was three or four. Four. Some of these kids start competing when they're four years old on a level where they're swimming at Cleveland State University and Akron University, when they're four and five years old. It's so amazing to see the growth of these kids and the amount of work that it puts in, not just the swimmers, but the coaches. They have to go to all these meets, they spend countless hours of dry land training on top of the, in the pool training. I'm not a swimmer. And I see my little boys and my daughter who's 10, but she's not here tonight, she's at the SFS. But she's, if there were to be a team, she would be on it, 100%. And I think a lot of the hardship that comes from these kids is there's no gratification from the other students that they're around. If you're not on a swim team and all your friends are playing basketball and football and baseball and it's super cool and it's like, "Oh yeah, my team did awesome," and people understand that. But these kids put in more hours of practice and gruely, ridiculous, hard practice that they say, "I just won the championships." And their friends are like, "Oh, okay." They don't understand it. So if it were to be a sport, I think a lot of kids who enjoy swimming would come out for it because there'd be more support and their friends and their peers and the other parents would understand what it is they have to go through on a daily basis, not to mention their season starts when football starts and it ends after basketball season. Some of these guys aren't done. They're going to zones. Who's going to zones? Ben, Cole. Zones is what, the entire northern?
Five states.
Five states. Five states that they're gonna be competing in Columbus. So they're not even done yet. So I just would plead with you to consider very carefully to allow our city, who happens to sit on a great lake and might, we might promote for people to be interested in even learning how to swim, which is a huge safety thing. But I just think it's so good, and this is a life skill, that these people can do their entire lives. You go to the pool and you see people swimming laps, you see 80-year-old men doing the fly and it's just incredible. So I just, for the future of Vermillion and for the future of these kids who put so much hard work into it, I would ask that you make it a varsity sport for Vermillion. Thank you.
And wrapping this up, swimming and diving has a large presence, very large presence in the SBC. Are you familiar with, I mean, any of the numbers at District 67 swim teams? That's just in our district. Conference and sectional, 15 teams. Mostly varsity, Vermillion's hanging in Maricopa. I don't know another one that is at that, within our lake and bay and river divisions. Looking at the OHSAA site, I refer commonly to that side that lists from across to swimming, those state-recognized, state-sanctioned events. Swimming is one of those. They, unfortunately, they don't list everything and I know there's kids that work hard and deserve recognition as other sport, but we're talking about sports that are state-recognized and sanctioned. Swimming is listed there and swimming is not currently listed on the list of Vermillion high school sports. As I said, it has a strong presence in the SBC. It feels time for the sailors to get on board. You have parental and community sport and as you can see here tonight, you also have student interest. We hope we can have your vote to provide a supplemental for swimming and diving in the 2019-2020 season. With your help, your students will be able to train, compete and be recognized at the SBC conference varsity level. We hope this decision that you can make, we hope you can make this decision tonight to help with scheduling, practices, meets and book training facilities. As always, I'm available for any questions and I always will be there for any help to make this thing go. Thank you.
Vermillion, what's your, is there one place you prefer for practice over the others in any way? You go to Oberlin and Mercy?
Right, well, the problem with Mercy and the Metro Parks was, were great with us this year with, you know, learning, how many leagues we need and that, they were very helpful with that. Mercy is wonderful because it is so close. The downside of it is it's not a competitive pool, there are no blocks.
Okay.
So I guess a big wish would be if we could split between Mercy and I used to always think maybe with Splash Zone, Splash Zone's having major construction coming up and they also have limits on how many people can be there. So an ideal kind of thing would be maybe three days at Mercy, two days at Oberlin College. They have the blocks. That also gets you in there with the opportunity of, you know, looking at the big picture, hosting a meet there. And that's a great new facility. Like I said, Splash Zone's having their roof taken off in October. So I don't know, which also then puts that time...
Could be at just one place as well, though, like Oberlin with the blocks.
If it just, if it was Oberlin College, we could do that, but then that adds in that extra travel too, you know, so we can end it both ways there.
Is there, yeah, I guess that would be, time-wise, other than not having the right equipment in Mercy, are you able to get in there when you need to or...
We had a successful year this year with that time. Six to, we did like a six to 7:30 time slot and speaking with Oberlin College, they were looking, looking at possibly like a seven to eight 30 time slot on two days.
So Mrs. Rainey, you came in along with Mr. Rainey and we discussed quite a few things at that meeting, Mrs. Delise and I, but one thing that I didn't ask you at that time was, what's the drop dead deadline that you would have to commit to this? Is there a time?
Well, this, sooner the better, one. And I know that from basketball games and football games, they're being scheduled with refs, swim meets are the same way with officials. Poor Clinton and Huron are like our friends, they want us to get this going, so they let us come in on try meets. You know, they're scheduling their meets in advance and we want to be organized, the sooner the better. Like Oberlin getting their roof taken off, there's not that many pools around here and they're gonna fill up fast.
So I told you, and it's not that this is just a financial consideration, although that's a big part of it, but we just got to finish a bit, teacher negotiations and the contract at this point is not ratified. We're assuming that it will be, but there's no guarantee of that and we just have another one to finish up this month. So it's gonna take us just a little while longer to get past that piece and we've been working with Justin to look at our finances. And that's not the only consideration, of course, with this. We know that there's value to extracurriculars, especially this one. And there's no doubt that these young men and women put in a lot of extra work. It's like wrestling, it's like kind of compared to that sport in terms of, it is brutal in the amount of time and effort that they put in. And you do go unnoticed to some degree with the sport. So we know that there's a lot of value to it, we're talking amongst the board and so I do a week in review every week and I'll keep them informed of what's going on with the finances. As we said, we're just finishing up these contracts. Give us a little bit more time. And I know that you don't have too much time, but I assure you that it's on our list, it's at the top of the list and it's something that we know has to be decided. There's gonna have to be a decision soon.
And then while we're maybe to just help, if you could maybe call some of the facilities and if we could get penciled or at least marked that, hey, there is an interest in this school district using, or that's not set in stone yet, but at least get...
We have supporting ways to support, you know, if it isn't support, we had donators and people that helped us do the pool rental. So it's really in just getting the time slot and sort of writing, it's not a contract between us and you, but it's really a contract, it would be through, to the pool, sort of, and it's just showing the interest.
To the school.
Would allow them to keep that pencil in. And in one form or another, we know that we would use that time slot.
So, but we just took a big first step towards being able to make a decision. So just give us a little bit longer here and we'll get back to these.
Thank you.
Do, how many students had, sort of came from Torpedoes or are they, some in both or do one or the other or...
We only, we have one, two, three, four, five, I mean, there's nine. I mean, you have Brittany. Multi.
Is that...
So there's two and then my five are the only YMCA. So there's not, there are a handful that did not come from the Y, too. I mean, they are just your population of, hey, wanna do it, give it a try.
So I guess put it another way, sorry Mike, if I'm cutting for you a little bit, but you had nine compete.
Right.
On behalf of the team this year. And I know you can't say for sure, but what would, if it became a team next year, what would you expect would be the level of participation?
Well, I mean, our interest level at first was, it was over 30 kids at first. And we expected to lose 10, so it came back to 21, but once we got to that, I couldn't exactly name the price to the parents because I didn't know how many, obviously the more kids, as soon as we had, the lower the price would go. I couldn't, there were a lot of variables that some of the parents just weren't ready to commit to and that they were very... to commit to, and that they were very respectful about, and they said, you know, let's keep this going, and they might be a better pull, you know, knowing that they're talking about it. And this is positive experience. There are a couple of new faces here that were not on our team, so there's a couple that might be interested as well. But just that little bit of, that little bit of help that I got, you know, last year, without being able to have the sports meeting and stuff like that, it's built. And I mean, it's not going to start off, I don't know if it's going to start off at 50, you know, something like that, but I think nine was a great jump in one year, especially the ones that were brand-new to it. And I hope it at least, at least double or triple.
Most teams that we competed with had 30 kids as an average, and some as large as Sandusky and Portland and Oak Harbor. I mean, those teams had upwards of 60, 50, 60 without, you know, narrowing it down. I mean, there were a lot of kids. We were six competitors, seven, eight competitors on a team against 30 and 40.
Swimmeet.com is a great website you can go to. It piles all, everything, and so you can see local districts and their other schools and who's competing and things like that, too. And that's a way to look at it, too, to get your substantial numbers on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all you guys for your effort. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for having us tonight, and we hope you'll be with us next season. I think we can go, and we'll continue on. Thank you for having us.
Item A, superintendent's report. Okay, I want to start off with the recommend, to recommend a resolution to approve payment of $500 to her Habermilk for baseball donation fundraiser account for assisting the baseball program, keeping stats, and publishing results. Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Habermilk?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Okay.
Ocean passes.
Yeah, this is a first for me. I think that in seven years, this is the first time I've ever read the...
You're stealing this under here.
That's right. Did you want to do it? Sorry. No, we're going to redo it.
Got our robe there.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. All right. The next item on my report is to have a representative, Walt Sokat, from, he's the director of rehab services for Mercy Regional Medical Center. And he is going to come up tonight and talk about the partnership that's already in place with Vermillion Local Schools. We're doing nurses, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and he wants to talk a little bit about physical training and some other aspects this evening. So he's going to just come up to the mic tonight. Thanks, Walt, for being here, and this is the first time we've had someone from Mercy actually come to the mic. I've spoken at all the board meetings prior to this about some of the things that we've been working on and doing, but we appreciate you being here and addressing the board personally tonight on behalf of Mercy. So thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you. So just a little bit of groundwork. I had pretty hard to follow what I just saw here. So we start off with a bunch of young students, right, some of which are going to be our future doctor recruits. Awesome, right? We go into the executive learning, that's pretty impressive. We could use Steph and some of that in our institution. And then we end up with this swimming team, so what a great segue. So thank you again. So just for formality, my name is Walt Sokat. So I do what Phil said, which was director of rehab services, but what that entails is a little bit more than that. So I'm the director and administrator for Ortho Services, which is all orthopedic services within Mercy. That includes sports medicine, orthopedic surgery, and anything that connects to that. In addition to that is neurospines, that's all the neurology and spine surgery stuff as well. And then eventually, we are moving into an interventional pain program. So all of that kind of wraps up in a big bundle of work for me, but which was really close to my heart, is the sports stuff. So I started many, many years ago as an occupational therapist at the University of Pittsburgh. Worked in sports medicine for many, many years in Pennsylvania. I came here about a year and a half ago, and now I live in Vermillion. So I live over in the Shosey Park. So it's been a nice transition for me. Anyway, so going forward, oh, I got this thing here. So, let's see here. So one of the questions that came to me was about, I'm not sure if a lot of people understand what the scope of Mercy is now. So Mercy, oftentimes, people think of Mercy of Lorraine, which is the community hospital off the road there, right? This is about 240 beds. But actually, Mercy Hospital, which I want to slide right now, we have 43 hospitals. We are the largest healthcare provider in the state of Ohio. That's very surprising. A lot of people probably think it's UH or Cleveland Clinic or something like that. Not even close. Secondly, we have about 90 athletic trainers on our staff across six or seven states. We merged with Bon Support Health System about six months ago. So we cover Ohio, there's hospitals in Virginia, South Carolina, Florida. So it's a pretty big institution. We have about 87 high schools we cover. We cover 12 colleges. We also have four professional teams, all of which aren't on these boughs, but just to give you some scope of what Mercy Health Bon Support is at this point. So the slides you're looking at now, what are we here locally? So right now, we have 18 orthopedic surgeons on staff. A lot of people are surprised by that. So we have two groups that are on staff, one of which is Center for Orthopedics. There's six of those gentlemen there. And then we have an orthopedic group called Orthopedic Associates, which are also fully credentialed here at Mercy Regional. And most of those doctors are also credentialed at Mercy Allen. In that group, six of those surgeons are actually sports medicine-trained or fellowship-trained, or they're awarded, and a more fellowship-trained of those six. We are also in the process right now of offering an employment contract to a soon-to-be fellow. He's actually in his fellowship right now, comes out in a couple of weeks at Ohio State University. So he's a local guy in the local community, coming back to the area. We hope to secure his interest as well in that area. We have about 50,000 ER visits a year, so we're pretty significant. It's not a insignificant organization in what we do right now. We have three board-certified neurologists. We also have three board-certified neurosurgeons. Why is that important? Oftentimes, people relate concussions, concussion concern, how are you going to manage that, right? So we have three neurosurgeons and also three neurologists on staff. You know, certainly, we don't want everyone to get to that point, but that's certainly well within our scope. We will become a Level III trauma center within the next probably three or four months, which again is a big uptick. We will be the only trauma center in the Lorraine County. We are also probably the largest employer in Lorraine County, about 2,000 employees. So just moving forward, so what does like Mercy athletic training services or sports medicine services like in current state? Right now, we have three athletic trainers on staff here locally. We cover the crushers as our exclusive sports medicine provider, but a full-time athletic trainer. We also provide services to the university for coverage, and we also are in discussions with two additional local schools other than Vermillion to enter into the same type of arrangements, which you're personally familiar with it. What does it look like? Well, as Phil talked a little bit about, we have been having conversations back and forth for a few months now about what current state looks like, what future vision could look like. Mercy Health values Vermillion Community as well as Vermillion School District. No doubt about that. We have a primary care office here locally. We have started recently, I think last year, Phil, if I'm not right, remember that correctly, we entered into service agreement with the school board. Thank you. We understand it's going pretty well, which we're offering our PT, OT, and speech services to your students who have some sort of academic or vocational need inside the school. My understanding, that's going pretty well. In addition to that, we've brought in three nurses to run your nurse, your school nursing program as well. All of those employees are right now what I would call our foundation services to our relationship and growing relationship with Vermillion Schools. What we're proposing is the second tier here in this pyramid. As you can see, it's athletic training along with physical therapy. What does that mean? Well, we'll talk a little bit about the athletic training services, but we're very interested in having a full-time athletic trainer. I know you have a very competent trainer right now. We've heard several, several positive stories about Julie. Really like to meet Julie. Have not had the opportunity just yet, but I look forward to potentially meeting her. In addition to that, what we're looking to do is potentially bring a skilled, actually licensed, physical therapist onsite for scheduled services. What will that bring? That will bring a service that kids who are injured could get services here onsite instead of having to travel and drive and miss hours of school or whatever they may do, which is really good. So swimmers, a lot of shoulder injuries of swimmers. I just have a good friend of mine, his daughter swims collegiately now, and a lot of instability problems in her shoulder. We worked with her three years back, and it's a good job that he does.
We would need it.
Yeah. What is the top tier, right? So top tier for us, and what we're still working through right now, is what does an advanced partnership look like, or what could it look like at the top of the pyramid? Well, there's a variety of things. We've talked about on-campus services, extensive on-campus services. We've talked about sponsorship. We've talked about additional programming and services that could come with that. We view that as, again, a pyramidal effect where we continue to build off of that core base, and I think that's been going pretty well right now. I think, did you get something recently in the mail from Eli?
I did.
So I'm very not privileged to talk about that. That's certainly for Eli's scope, but if you have questions, I'd be certainly happy to answer them if I can. Next slide here is real quick. I'm just going to, if there's, what would it look like if we came here and offered services? We certainly would upgrade the athletic training facilities. We would also do some onsite physical therapy to enhance the recovery. Impact testing, what is impact? I know you're doing it. We would do baseline, also follow-up. Impact is all around the concussion management, right? So it's trying to get a baseline on kids. If they could do get a concussive event, how do you manage that? How do you recover them? How do you return to school? How do you return to play? Establishment of injury prevention training programs. I'm not sure if you know this, but ACL injuries are a prime injury focused on athletes, primarily female athletes more so than males. There's a lot of reason and rationale behind that. However, the University of, I mean, Cincinnati Sports Metric Program, which is part of Mercy's program, was the initiator of the nationally-known Sports Metric Program, which is a program designed to reduce incidence of ACL rupture or ACL tear, which is really good. So we would envision bringing those sorts of things. The baseball team, thrower programs, shoulder recovery programs, stability and stabilization programs, all those kind of things. There's many other things that we can bring as well. We also look to bring increased upgrading of your equipment. What does that mean? Well, right now, you know, when you get an injury, there are certain modalities that could be done with people to help their recovery faster, whether it be ice, whether it be stimulation, whether it be antical, whether it be thermal, whether it be, you know, lasers and so forth. All of those are designed around trying to reduce edema, increase mobility, increase flexibility, decrease pain, increase recovery rate of time. So that's what that's all about. We also are looking to bring some performance enhancement program. What does that mean? Well, down the road, as we get better and better here with this, performance enhancement is, is how do you jump higher? How do you swim faster? How do you, how do you run faster? How do you excel? How do you exploit it to attack all those sorts of things? Those are all performance enhancement strategies, right? So throughout our vast network, either Toledo, Youngstown, Cincinnati, and other places, we do a lot of these programs, and so we look at can that, bring that here and develop it and help your athletes basically perform better. And say, stronger athletes generally perform better. So what do athletic training services look like? Well, a lot of this stuff is probably not rocket science, but you know, it's a full-time athletic trainer, event practice coverage, both home and away. Certainly, that will be coordinated with the athletic director typically, which is the event most critical to cover. Injury evaluation management and recovery, fast-track referrals of sports medicine-focused doctors, concussion evaluations, we'll talk a little more about that later. Injury prevention and event preparation. What does that mean? So that's ankle taping, icing down before, you know, before, after, events and so forth. We would also bring a designated team doctor. So what does that mean? We will have a designated doctor of sports medicine advanced training onsite. They generally cover all home football varsity games, but oftentimes, I find they cover more events. There would also be a team orthopedist. That individual will be also assigned to the school as well. Will they both be here at the same time? Possibly. Would one or the other be here, certainly, during certain events? No doubt about that. We would also have a certified impact consultant. What does that mean? Well, there are very few in this area, but that is an advanced credentialing around impact and concussion treating. So that's a physician or someone of that provider level that has advanced certification in concussion identification, chart reading, evaluation, and decision making. So let's talk a little bit about concussions and our open to the questions. So what is concussions? So I know that this is a big hot item around all athletics, and it should be. So concussions, what is it? Sports-related concussion protocol. We created a sports-related concussion program in line with Impact, along with the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center, our experts in Cincinnati and Toledo. We locally have endorsed that same. We had our own neurologist, our own medical director of sports medicine look over it and signed off on it, so ready to go. Impact, this was a big concern, I think, that we talked about about a year ago on this. What is Impact? Impact is a tool that's oftentimes used to help determine baseline performance. It compares individuals to themselves, pretty much, but it also compares them to normative data across the country. The University of Pittsburgh created that Impact program several years back. They recently came out with, I'm not sure if it's published yet, a pediatric version of that, so under 13. Prior to that, it was 14 and above, or 13 and above, something of that nature. They could not go below 13. Now they have data around younger kids with concussion events. So what does that mean? Well, inside of Impact right now, what you typically would want to do, right, is you would want to do a baseline test on every athlete that is in a concussive risk school. Some schools decide to do all athletes. That could be done. What you do is you do a baseline test. You typically do it at ninth and 11th grade, or you can do it at eighth and 10th, and you can, but you typically do a baseline test at two different age points. And then you don't do a follow-up test unless a kid has a concussive event. If a kid has a concussive event or a concern of a concussive event, you could do a follow-up test. That follow-up test would then simply give you a data point, a comparison between current state and previous state. So it gives you an idea, are they performing better or worse or different? And it gives you an ability to measure that over time, okay? So as they recover. Additionally, it also gives you the ability to compare to the norm. So you can compare it to other 18-year-olds or other 16-year-old male females, a variety of things like that. Where does that data live at? So that data lives inside the software. It is the property typically of the provider. In this case, I understand Cleveland Clinic might own that property or that data, if you would, of all the athletes who went through the program. Every provider inside of Impact has the ability to release that data to anyone else. In other words, they can release that data back to the school. So if a kid has a history of problems and you decide to switch providers, okay, it is very simply done by Cleveland Clinic or any provider, Mercy could do it. We just release the data back to the school, okay? And then it becomes accessible for compariveness. If however a provider decides that that's not in their best interest or legally they get advice not to do that for some reason, then what Mercy would do is we would baseline everybody. There is no cost to the school for Impact testing. It is something that Mercy absorbs. It's not a cost to the school at all. It takes about 10 to 20 minutes per athlete. You typically do it in groups of people. So you test five, six, seven, 10 kids at a time. They sit on a computer, they go through these cognitive tests of reaction time, memory, and a variety of other higher executive learning functions, and then you can compare it over time. So what our interest would be is to build upon the pyramid that we talked about before and to look at, you know, how do we go to the next level here? How do we grow towards a more advanced partnership with Vermillion School District and Vermillion Community? I think that we're certainly committed to doing that. There's a lot of opportunity, I think, to do that, and I look forward to any questions you might have. I'll be answering them. Any questions?
Walt, I'm going to share the PowerPoint that you gave me with them. And as always, in my weekend review, I'm giving them information about how things are proceeding with this partnership. And I also did give them the document that you recently shared with me, so we'll get a chance to talk about that in more detail. So give us a little bit more time to look at that document, look at the PowerPoint that you shared here today. And we know that we're also moving forward with you on the top tier of this as well. So we'll keep talking, and we appreciate that you came in today and gave us more information about the trainer. And you're right, I think part of this, though, is Julie has been here for a while, and that was a decision last year that we decided to keep her. And so we just have to think about what we need to do going forward with that. So give us a little bit more time, and we'll talk about it.
Can I address that one real quick? So there is an opportunity. So look, it makes absolute sense to me to take a very skilled person who's very valued in the school and just remarry it, right? And repopulate it because it just wins for the athletes, it wins for the school, it wins for the person, and it wins for the organization. And that, that's a simple thing. I would certainly entertain that, no doubt about that. So I understand the sensitivities around that. People are valued, and we're not looking to undervalue people.
Thanks for reaching out to her. I know that you said you did, and hopefully you'll talk with her soon.
Yeah, yeah.
That'll be good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your interest.
That's all I have for my superintendent's report.
Great.
Thanks. Okay, I have the treasurer's report.
Recommend a resolution to approve the financial report, February 28, 2019.
I'll move. A second.
Attachment aid, your packet. Just going over the general fund revenue by month. Through the month of February, the district has received 15.9 million in general fund revenue compared to 16.5 last time, last year at this time, and 15.1 in fiscal year 17. So again, we're on pace right now, February, March, April, we'll start collecting our property taxes. In the month of February, we received our advances. After, what is it, February 15th, the county auditor has 45 days to give out the rest, the remaining of the taxes collected. So again, we should see our full tax collection, I would anticipate, by the end of March. So again, with these numbers as close as they are, it's just a timing issue. We'll know a little more when we fall around April. But right now, we're, we're pretty much on pace to where we've been in the last couple of years. Looking at our food service revenue, through the month of February, we've received $437,388 in food service revenue compared to $416,733 and $443,746 in fiscal year 17. So again, very small window. We're right on pace with where we've been the last three years with our food and service revenue. And when you combine everything and you look at all of our revenue, through the month of February, the district has received $17.3 million in all funds compared to $18.0 million last year and $17.1 million the year prior. So again, we're floating around a $900,000 swing over the last three years here. Now we want to look at expenditures. Looking at the general fund expenditures through the month of February, we've expended $14.7 million from the general fund compared to $15.7 at this time last year and $15.9 the previous year. So again, our revenue, for the most part, seems to be in line with where we've been. However, our general fund expenditures are about a million dollars less than they were previous year and 1.2 million dollars less than they were in 17. Moving on to food service, our food service expenditures by month. So far this year, we've expended $367,965 compared to $421,000 and $402,000 in fiscal year 17. So again, even our food services are down just a little bit. That has a little impact just based on a little bit declining as well. We're not producing as many lunches, don't need to buy as much. And then when we take a look at all funds expenditures by month, through the course of this year, we've expended $16.2 million from all funds compared to $17.4 at this time last year and $17.7 in fiscal year 17. So again, we're about 1.3, 1.4 million dollars less at this time this year than we were last year at this time. And then lastly, we want to look at cash. Our general fund cash balance through the month of February is $15.7 million compared to $14.8 at this time last year and $13.2 in fiscal year 17. Looking at food service cash, through the month of February this year, we are at $369,000. Same time last year, we had $364,000, and fiscal year 17, we had $252,000. And then lastly, we want to take a look at all cash. All cash through the month of February, we have a total of $19.1 million compared to this time last year, $18.1 million and $16.6 million in fiscal year 17. So again, our revenue, and I haven't pulled it up, I don't have a veranda here for you, but since 2008, our revenue has fluctuated anywhere from 22.5 million to 24 million. It's always stayed within that, that narrow window. And then, again, we'll be right around that same area, 22.5 to 24 million is what we're going to end up this year. Taking a look at investments, through the month of February this year, we've earned a total of $205,204 on interest compared to $132,245 at the same time last year.
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Step?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Recommend a resolution to accept the following donations. $1,000 from Edward and Barbara Cobal to the Matt Cobal Scholarship. $200 from the VTA to the Leo Club. $2,000 from the Athletic Boosters to the Athletic Fund. A second. Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Step?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Recommend that the Board of Education approve the amounts and rates for the revised fiscal year 2019, 2020 certification of tax levies, attachment B.
I'll move.
A second.
I guess to quickly explain this, attachment B, if you go over to page two, it's Schedule A and Schedule B. What this is, is I submit a bunch of information to the county. The county that verifies it takes a look at what their rates are, compares ours, if we're within a very narrow margin, they'll go with what we have here. This is just showing what we anticipate to collect from our levies. On the Schedule A side there for the library bond, the library, our general fund that are outside village, and then down below in Schedule B, and I'll go over this real quick. These were, these are our current levies. So we passed in 1976 our first levy at 35 mils. House Bill 920 is effectively reduced at 35 mils. Again, we cannot collect any more money than what we originally collected in 1976 for that village. So in 1976, 35 mils equaled $5.6 million. We will always collect $5.6 million despite what property values do unless they were to significantly decline. Our next levy we passed was in May of 1989. That's gonna collect at most 1.57 million dollars. Our next one was 1992, collect 1.7 million. 1993, it'll collect 2 million. And then our continuing, those were all our continuing levies. Our emergency levy, which was just renewed on March 15th, 2016, it cannot exceed $4.25 million. That was renewed. And then just most recently, November 6th, voters passed the safety and security levy of 0.68 mils for 302,000. And what we're doing is just verifying that this is accurate information, and I provided this information to the county.
Any questions? Ms. Step?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0, or 4-0. Recommend a resolution to approve the payment of $6,398 to Ohio School Boards Association for the 2019 membership dues. I'll move. A second.
It's just our annual membership.
Any questions?
Oh, it's good, it's not cheap, right?
It's based on enrollment.
Is it?
Yeah. Yeah, bill gets pretty substantial, shoot, Cleveland Municipal.
Call the roll. Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Step?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Recommend a resolution to approve the contract with Connect, regional computer service provider from July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2022, at a cost of $4,600. That's gonna be attachment D. This is our internet service provider. I think we get quite the discount. The original price on that is $25,000. Look through our discounts, it's $4,600. I'll move.
I'll second.
Any other questions? Call the roll. Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Step?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Items for discussion, if you have anything.
Maybe just shout out to the tennis basketball program and the coach, Abraham Miller. And that was a great couple of games and a good season, and I'm really proud of them. We're doing that hopefully three months. We just did it three times.
You did.
Just think it was fun to watch.
Meeting up? Item nine, consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommended the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Actions by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests any items. Item be removed from the consent agenda and voted up on separately. Item number one, minutes of the February 11th, 2019 board meeting, attachment E. Recommend, number two, recommend a resolution to approve the amendment agreement for educational services between the Ray County Board of Developmental Disabilities and Vermillion Little School District for services from Murray Bridge, attachment F. Number three, recommend a resolution to approve the update of the student activity guide, that's attachment G. Number four, recommend a resolution to approve this statement of understanding between Vermillion Little Schools and the Ray County Community College to promote a program which will enhance the development of additional resources and opportunities, attachment F. Number five, approve the following employment actions. Letter of resignation from Sherri Henry White, effective March 1st, 2019. Jason Sokol, marketing and communication director, effective March 1st, 2019. Number six, one-year limited supplemental contract for the 2018-2019 contract year to the following as listed. Number seven, one-year special projects contract for the 2018-2019 contract year to Catherine Starwell, intervention specialist, $20,000 hour as needed basis. Number eight, one-year limited contract for the position of student worker until the contract year ending June 30th, 2019, to Caleb Bryant. Number nine, one-year limited classified contract for the 2018-2019 school year to Tonya Rodman, monitor, SMS, $10.05. Number 10, approve Devon Snook, Shauna Stillman, and Marilena Jacinto to be paid $450 each from the track donation account for operating the electronic timing system through the 2018-2019 track set season. Number 11, approve Tim Clark and Gerald Wester to be paid $500 each from the baseball donation fundraiser for assisting the baseball program, keeping stats, and publishing results through the 2018-2019 baseball season.
I'll second.
Any items that need to be removed or discussion? Call the roll. Ms. Step?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Item 10, no items were to remove for the consent agendas. Moving on, public participation.
Nobody's allowed to vote. Thank God.
Item 12, date and location of upcoming board meetings located at Vermillion High School, Route 15, Sanford Street, Vermillion, unless noted. Regular meeting Monday, April 8th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Regular meeting Monday, May 13th, at 7:00 PM. Regular meeting Monday, June 10th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Shelley, anybody have any problems?
I might have an issue with April 8th.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
And Shelley, Shelley's got a problem with me, so. Do we wanna go next week?
We could do it on April 1st and not show up.
I will actually still, if they had to joke, I actually will be in Florida still April 1st, so.
I won't be in time on April 1st. We'd have to go the other way.
Do we wanna try 15th?
I'm gonna bring you a tape.
My birthday is next. My 34th birthday, maybe.
15th, sound okay?
I don't think there's a big celebration that day.
April 15th.
Can you do a meeting on your birthday?
I guess I, how else would I wanna celebrate? You know? It's what I'm thinking of.
We could go, if you wanna go, 22nd.
No, it's fine.
Okay. May, Sully showed, said she couldn't do, she's gonna be out of town on the 13th. She said either 6 or 20, it didn't matter to her. Does, if we wait until the 20th, does that cause a problem at all with like selection of local scholarships and stuff?
Oh, yeah.
Is that too late?
Cut it tight. Yeah, 29th is the scholarship date.
So we're probably gonna go 6 if we could.
The only thing is, I was gonna say, for me, I have to do the forecast, so I need to close up the books for April, which will happen that first week in May, and then from there I'll need to do something. So for me, the later on in May, the easier it is.
How about this, how about for right now? Just keep it at 13? Leave it on the 13th?
Yeah.
And then if, from a scholarship standpoint, if it makes sense to move it, if we can, we will. If we won't, then we, it is what it is, right?
Okay.
Okay, is that okay with 13?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I just need a week in May, the first week, just to make sure it doesn't close.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay. Item 13, require a resolution to move in the executive session for purpose of preparing for, conducting, or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees. I'll move two, first, property to the public purpose of sale of property for competitive bidding. Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Step?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Time on. Big 16s.